All right, welcome everybody to tonight's Town of Pappy Planning Board meeting. A meeting to order, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm Sue Smith, Chairman. Quick introductions to my right is Board Member Dan Vargavas. Kevin Corson is running a little bit late tonight. Secretary Sarah LaJudas, myself, Carl Farrenker, Deb Cook, and Luke Pazey. Town Engineer John Dunkle. Planning Board Attorney Amelia McLean-Robinson. In the back we do have our Code Enforcement Officer Tim joining us today. And thanks to Veronica for running our Zoom and all the good stuff.
You bet.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In light of recent happenings here in Saturday, I think there's some personal contacts that are affected with that also. I ask for a moment of silence for our two fallen police officers, please. Thank you. First off, if we're reviewing our minutes from the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, do we have any corrections, additions, or additions to that? Hearing none, make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion.
And a second, a paper discussion, hearing none, all favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is the Curtis subdivision. Scheduled as a public hearing on an application for the subdivision of two acres of land from a fourteen point five four acre parcel located on Bush Road in the Town of Pappy. Text map number is zero one eight dot dash zero two dash zero eight dot one. Representative, come on up.
Good evening, guys.
Say your name again.
Nicholas Curtis.
Can you just kind of go back over again?
Yep.
Russ?
So we were just going to break off that two acre red rainbow there on the east line. Pretty straightforward, button drive, nothing really too, you know, crazy about it. I spoke, I know the last time I was here you guys said something about the mission of lot one. I spoke with a surveyor about that and he said it was part of the map and there really wasn't anything that he could do about it. So I'm not sure, I don't know, you know, as far as that goes.
Was... What was labeled lot?
Yeah, so there was...
It was lot one and you're subdividing lot two into two pieces?
Yeah, so that lot one that's on above this property is not part of my property. That's a part of the, this whole thing was one big subdivision at one time back in the past. So that was a lot one from previous lots that were subdivided off. That's got nothing to do with me. This lot one that I'm looking to subdivide off is the current one down here on this two acre lot.
Amelia, would it make more sense if the lot one that he says is not part of his, if somewhere on that showed the name of that original subdivision?
So you don't own the section, this is somewhere else?
No, this would be my lot one and then my lot two.
So you're asking if he should put the property owner's name on that section of lot one? I mean, it would make it clear. Is that... Did your, they didn't want to just add the name, they just didn't want to change the lot number?
Yeah, no, I asked him about it and he just basically told me that's how it was. I was like, alright.
Yeah.
So...
I mean...
If he made it lot three, me, lot three, then what?
But he's saying, he's saying that, I understand you, this lot was never...
That's not me.
Yeah.
But originally, was this like altogether and then that was off and this was off?
Yeah, whatever they did way back in the day, I have no idea. But they, it had been subdivided numerous times. So I'm assuming that that was a lot one of a subdivision from the past.
So when this was split, this was one and this was two?
Most likely.
So then in that case, I think we could make this agree, right? Because it's in the chain.
If that...
Yeah, if that was, if...
If that came from, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if that was the case.
Alright.
I guess it's Nicholas, basically the question of what we're looking at of your lot one and two. Before you drew in a lot line, was that referred to as lot two?
So this original fourteen acre piece, was that referred to as lot two? I don't know, honestly. I'm not quite sure.
Shouldn't that show on that?
Because it would create a recording issue, I think. If this whole section, that's I guess what we mean, this was all lot two, then we could just do this and do this lot three.
Okay. Alright, I didn't even ask him, I didn't ask him about that. I didn't ask him about the lot three. So that'd be something, I was just asking him if he could remove that lot one on top and just get that out of the equation altogether, you know?
Take it off.
Yeah.
Text map number, the top one, top left, yeah, to just show that it's not part of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah. I could, yeah.
Somehow there's got to be some kind of differentiation, avoid confusion down from...
I will run that by him for sure. That would make sense, text map name, something like that.
John, did you see that?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Any other questions from the board?
Well, no, not, just a general question, I guess, for the attorney would be is, you know, if a parcel has been subdivided, say it was a hundred acre piece and it's already been subdivided four ways. It's a minor subdivision. How many years later can it come back and one of those pieces be re-subdivided four times again?
I'd have to look into that. I don't know.
So that would be, you know, when we're looking at these, when there's multiple numbers already, it's implying to me it's already been subdivided once. If it's been subdivided twice, then going a third time is no big deal. But if it's going a fifth time, then you're in a major subdivision category. And I don't think we have any way of figuring it out, so. So that's the only thing that was rummaging in my mind. Otherwise, it seems like a very clean subdivision.
Yeah.
You said advertised. Do you have the confirmation that you sent?
I have it. It's not with me tonight.
Okay.
But I can give it to you very soon.
Okay, yep, that's fine. I know you did send them because I talked to one of your neighbors.
Okay, yeah.
Letters were definitely sent.
Yeah, no, I saw them.
So, that... Yep, so we're opening the public hearing. After looking over the application and input, we're going to do our seeker assessment. Seeker is a series of eleven questions which may be answered either by no or small impact or moderate to large impact. So number one, will a proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use planning, use plan or zoning regulations? I say no or small impact. Will a proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity of land? Again, no or small impact. Agreed. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, biking or walkway? No or small.
Sorry.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact. Will a proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies and B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? On both, no or small impact. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No or small impact. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small impact. And eleven, will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact. Based on these findings, I make a motion for negative declaration. For our seconds, do we have further discussion? Hearing none, vote aye for approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for negative declaration. So it's been advertised, done our seeker, making motion to open the public hearing on the Curtis subdivision in Bush Road.
I'll second the motion.
Kevin's second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to comment on the subdivision? At least I'm getting smiles. Going once, going twice. Hearing none, make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Based on these findings, I guess let's bring Kevin, our only discussion was I'm trying to label the lots. The surveyor told me couldn't change that name. So we're trying to figure out, can he at least identify it either with a parcel number or current owner or whatever. I think we're good then. Good, satisfied.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him and run that by him. Hopefully he can put something in there.
Just some way to differentiate through there. Yeah. Based on the contingency of getting the lot, original lot one clarified, I make a motion to approve the Curtis subdivision. Based on a map by Seguin, S-E-G-U-I-N, Land Surveying LLC. Map dated one, two, twenty-four. For a second, do you want to include the fact that lot one is not approved for building a chill septic system and driveway? Drive code and septic. I will add that to the motion. One more time. With the note that lot one is not a buildable lot. Septic and driveway. Your second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the two things, the lot one and the information that you sent out, the certified map.
Okay.
After you get the lot one and so on, I'm going to bring the maps here. Either I can sign or Tim can sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Alrighty, thank you. Are we all set?
Well, good luck with everything.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Take care. You know what to do from this point, right?
Yes, I'm going to get a look at the surveyor, see if he can get the tax ID on that. And then I will get to her the affidavit. And then, that's pretty much it.
Bring the maps back so we can get them signed.
And then bring the maps.
They'll be signed, okay.
Okay, so just bring them back. And don't forget the files. Don't forget what, I'm sorry? To file the maps. Okay. Just bring them back to just the town or to the next meeting? You, no, you can bring them back for the meeting if you have any ideas. Okay.
Okay.
Have you got his number?
Oh, yeah.
Just give a call so he'll be here or whatever.
Got a couple of them, yeah. Alright.
Yep.
Everybody seems to have his number.
Yeah. Poor guy. That's scary.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda, Lockheed Martin site plan review. Preliminary review of the site plan submitted by Lockheed Martin for the rebuild of a dome building used for equipment testing in the same location as a previous dome located at thirty-two fifty-four Windy Hill Lane in the Town of Pappy. Text map number zero one five dot dash zero two dash twenty-two dot zero.
Amelia, I have a question on this one. Why did they have to come before this board if they're rebuilding something that was already there?
Well, for site plan approval, right? Yeah.
It's on the same, it's...
It's been taken down, but they're tearing out concrete, stuff like that.
We have to rebuild the footers.
So you're not putting it on the same footprint you are?
It's not the same footprint. It's actually, the dome is slightly smaller than the existing footprint. So we'll be rebuilding the footers and putting the dome on top of the existing.
It just would seem to me that'd be more code enforcement, just to make sure that the concrete's done well. We don't really do that and the dome is going to be in the same spot that the existing dome was in. I'm just curious.
It's a type two, it's a type two action under seeker, but site change deals under town code, so I don't...
There's some additional site grading and some trenching. It's different than what... Ethyl, ethyl replacement. Okay, just curious.
We still can't read.
Yeah, everyone's got a print so small nowadays, I can't see anything.
Yeah, we have water guns to it.
No, it's our eyesight of old people.
Thanks.
You're great.
Yeah.
Steve Miron, CMS Engineers.
What was his name?
Steve Miron.
That's your last name?
M-E-A-R-O-N.
My D. Your D.
Oh, sure.
So this is the one right when you get to the facility?
Correct.
Right there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Here with Jeff Isel, here with Lockheed. We're here in front of you today for a new pad, sitting on an existing pad. It's roughly twenty-three hundred square feet with a four hundred foot entryway. Dome stands roughly forty-one feet tall. There's two existing domes on site. This one has been built recently and this one's existing. This is forty-five feet tall.
And you've been using that platform with portable radars and such?
Yeah. They'll be used with that type of radar plus a new, new line of radar.
Right, right. So you've been actually using that part of the facility, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, there's existing footers there. There's existing tie downs for the radar that they're currently...
Yep, yep.
Those will be replaced for the new pad.
So essentially you're going to do the same thing, just put a dome over it?
Correct. We'll be upgrading the electrical service to it too, but yes.
So you guys don't have to stand in the rain anymore?
That's the main reason we built it, yes. Other site improvements. Well, there's an existing antenna that will be moved from roughly this location, about fifty feet to the north of this drive aisle. There will be a new communication building, which is eight by fourteen by twelve feet tall. And a new transformer will be built on site. We don't propose any new lighting.
So the future range building that's shown on here, that's the one you just got approved from?
That's the one, yeah, it's already approved.
Yeah, yeah, everything built here.
Yep. That building hasn't been built.
Yeah.
It's been built.
Oh, just because it says future here on the...
Yeah, the page kind of went out of order.
That's okay, yeah. I thought they had to put it together. That's for the laser testing. Yeah, okay, so that building's completed?
It's completed.
Yep.
How tall the city antenna was?
The dome is forty-one feet.
Moving antenna, set it to north?
Yes. The existing antenna. It's actually a lightning rod, so it's a lightning rod. To the other side of our...
How is it?
That's, looks like about forty-five, fifty feet with the ground on top.
Typically wanted a little taller than what you're protecting.
Right.
Yeah.
At least fifty.
Yeah.
The dome will have its own lightning protection.
Okay.
The pad for the transformer is new?
There's an existing pad and then we're rebuilding the pad for the... Oh, you mean for the antenna?
The transformer, you have the...
It will, it will...
Existing or that's new?
No, that will be a new transformer pad. The current transformers are on the pole, natural grid.
Okay, it's going to be a bigger transformer?
Yeah. Curiosity, you guys have a sizable generator when they... All of that?
There's no generator there.
Really? It's powered without your shutdown?
Frequently, as you may know if you listen to me.
You bring generators up there to test with the equipment?
They have generators, we don't always bring them up there because we're trying to eliminate the noise that is associated with... They do, they do have them.
Yeah.
Private frame brings them up here.
And there, yeah. I see it twice a day. I walk my dogs there, first house on the street.
Okay.
Also the traffic control officer, I tend to slow people down.
I regenerate every time he goes up there. So it's twenty-five, still fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, everyone's pretty good at that.
Good.
Yeah. I had a new security guard there a couple of years ago when my wife and I were walking up there with the neighbors when our dogs came out of the facility and came out on the road to ask us what we were doing. Started to tell them we were Russian spies, but dogs gave us away. Watching our dogs. They usually leave the gate open in winter for the dogs to turn around. They're much more secure.
Yeah, doing more... More product up there, yeah.
Yeah. Actually, open each the gate.
So the gate is controlled by card access reader, it's a badge. And if you don't have a badge, there's a phone that goes to the guard check and he can open it. And then you report and sign in.
I'm more curious because I drive school bus. I don't know who opens it or how long you sit there sometimes.
Yeah, it's up to the guard.
Okay. Yeah, it's full time guard now. It didn't used to be, back in the day, you hit the button and it called Liverpool.
Right.
But now there's a, is it twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, and we see that key being wired. Ever since I saw that one, it's Russian spy. Did you have much of a chance to go through this or? Yeah. Ready?
Absolutely.
What additional appropriate surfaces would you be adding as a result of this project? You've got a transformer pad, you've got a pad for the new antenna. Anything else that's outside the footprint of the existing?
Nope.
It just has two pads.
Yes.
Do you have an idea how much disturbance there's going to be total, total disturbance?
Oh.
You've got trenching, redoing the parking lot, you're grading a lot more around the new pad.
Yeah, this is roughly twenty-eight hundred square feet. I believe this is this is around twenty-three hundred square feet and then there is trenching.
You've got grading around the pad, maybe that too.
Yeah, grading.
So it sounds like you're under...
Yeah, it won't be much, much under anything.
So you're raising the pad two feet and as a result you're doing a bunch of grading filling, I assume, around the pad? That's what the proposed grade lines are?
Yeah.
And there any trees that need to be removed to accommodate that new grading?
We're hoping not. We're going to keep the trees as many as we can. Yeah, this is a densely wooded area. Free on your shoulder.
Yeah, and you're, it looks like you've all righted it, right?
Yep.
The drainage just help up there. You wouldn't think that far up on the hill, but the soil is so thin to get to the shale. There's not much soil up there.
Not much at all.
Yeah. They're adding, they're adding soil. That is coming up. And my only other comment was the still pointing that your shell needs to be parallel to the conduit.
Correct.
Other than that, I think this is fairly minor impact to the grounding lamp cage and to drain it.
So they're adding two to three, that's all from soil on that property.
I don't know if there's any source, you're probably going to...
I don't know if there's any source, you're probably gonna import it.
Import it.
Now, I guess one of these, you can see, there's a chain link fence that surrounds the whole facility. I guess I can see it on the period of photograph. So you don't see any increase in activity, just the activity's gonna be enclosed now?
Correct.
Okay. But so, because it's pretty regular that there's something on that pad.
It isn't right now, there's soon to be.
Yeah.
We don't expect to start until after July fourth weekend, that pad reads up for the pitch ups.
So I asked, Tim, we did a little background. For the last time, came in, some of the. Questions all came back to the road. Increased travel versus, or usage versus who lives there. Tim did a little research in the D R and we know that. As you drive in Windy Hill Lane, up until a sharp curve, that's all town maintenance. From the curve up to your site. Yep, that's all your guys' maintenance.
And they have paved that, they've improved the paving from where your property starts back in.
Just a clarification, it came up last time, probably public hearing, but.
Yeah, I think Mike Pollock asked about it and you could see, we, we do the oil and stone and they've got black asphalt on their section.
Where does that start? Does it start right after the turn?
Yeah, right, just about on the turn at the tree line. Yeah. At last, how's?
The way where there's like a mailbox on there?
That's actually your mailbox.
There you go.
You don't use it, but that black, heavy duty mailbox, that's yours from back in the day.
That's the neighborhood suggestion box?
Exactly.
I will clarify, the town files all the way up. But as far as maintenance of the actual road, that's where the, the difference comes in. Otherwise, yeah, the county question from the neighbors is keep the speed down.
Very.
Got your comments, any, you have anything to say later?
Type two, so short.
Yeah.
Tim, did you have anything? Anything else from the board?
And you've got all the, well, I guess we'll give you the names for notification. Public hearing, yeah.
Yes. Public hearing next month.
Okay.
Good.
notify the neighbors and.
And turn in the.
Turn in the certificate.
Two.
Yep. Alright.
That means it's golden.
Yes, thank you so much, everyone.
Do you have any?
No.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Can I second the motion?
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nope. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.